Have BD come to order Worthington City Council Regular Meeting. Five thirty PM, Monday, June tenth, twenty twenty four, City Hall Council Chambers. I could have everybody rise if I believe this.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, want to welcome everybody. We don't have any additions or corrections for the agendas. Okay, we have a motion and second and further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carried. Consent agenda, City Council minutes from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. Minutes from the boards, commissions, with the local Board of Appeals Equalization Meeting Minutes of May second, twenty twenty four. City Council Business Application for Temporary On Sale Liquor License, LACO Committee Improvement Association. Application for Temporary On Sale Liquor License for Worthington. Application to Block Streets for Worthington Agribusiness Committee. Application to Block Streets Sidewalks for Worthington and Bill's Payable. Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Onto. Oh, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Onto Council Business, Community Development.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, I've got a couple of people here to introduce. If you've been here long enough, you've seen Luke here in the past. Han is a new staff member with Nobles County Community Services. She's also the ship coordinator for Nobles County. The city works with these two folks a lot and will work with Han as she gets more into the role there. They're a great resource with a lot of like active living, you know, wellness projects, that kind of thing, a lot of grants as well. They're a great resource and very helpful with a lot of different grant opportunities. In the past, most notably, they've been very key with our Active Living Plan and the Active Living Committee that used to meet regularly, that kind of fizzled out years ago. But I'll let Luke kind of talk about the future plans for that. So these aren't just two random staff members, they're people that do a lot of good work for the community and work with us quite a bit. So with that, I'll hand things over and let you guys introduce yourselves.
So may I have talked about me a little bit there? My name is Han. I'm a new health educator at Noble County Community Services. And I work mainly with SHIP. It's a statewide implement program that promote healthy living, healthy eating and exercise and things like that. Today, we're gonna talk about active living, our plan for the city here in Worthington.
Yes, all right, and I'm Luke Ewald. I work for Des Moines Valley Health and Human Services. So that's Conwy and Jackson County with public health. I kind of do, you know, I do SHIP. I also do kind of whatever they ask me to do. And what Matthew or Matt described with the Active Living Plan side of things, it's been a few years. The original plan was adopted on May twenty fifteen. So we're going on, it's been over nine years now. So maybe looking at doing an update to that plan or looking at creating a whole other type of Active Living Plan. And I kind of have some, you know, a potential grant opportunity here that would be coming up sometime this autumn season for you folks to consider. So this meeting or this request, I guess, is more disinformational. We can always come back, you know, later this summer, once it's a net, you know, once it's opens for solicitation and stuff. But yeah, with SHIP, for those who don't really know what SHIP's about, I think the last time I came to one of these meetings was maybe in twenty twenty one, when Claire Henning was at Nobles County Community Services and working under SHIP. But as Han mentioned, you know, the Active Living side of things, the healthy eating, there's some kind of newer stuff with the tobacco prevention and maybe including cannabis down the road as well. And then the mental health wellbeing side of things. So it's pretty flexible in the types of projects we can help communities with. And, you know, we are a grant source, you know, we can provide funding like mini grants to communities. We can help write grants like for, you know, say that you're looking for like a kayak launch or something, you know, I've done that with the city of Jackson in the past and we got them a kayak launch. So we can help find other grants that might be outside of SHIP's overall scope to work with these folks on. So does anyone have any questions about SHIP? Otherwise, I can just move right into what we're looking at with this, you know, with this potential grant in the fall season here. Okay, so the MINDOT Active Transportation Grant, so I worked with the city of Jackson on this. It became available about maybe two years ago. MINDOT was soliciting this as an opportunity for communities or counties to, I guess, do something with active living, you know, active transportation during the height of the pandemic with COVID nineteen. So with you folks, I guess, leading up to maybe this autumn season would be the time to kind of think, what would fit best for Worthington? You know, you could do like a multi-quarter study, you could do like a bicycle master plan, you could do like a walking master plan, you could do something focused just on neighborhoods. So it's quite flexible. Say that you do get the funding, the Minnesota Department of Transportation within hire a consultant. I don't want to make any assumptions, but I'm guessing it would be HDR, that's who Jackson had. For Jackson, we created a, it was called a Jackson County Parks and Trails Master Plan, which includes most of the trail system in Jackson, Highland Wood State Park, and then the county parks, and then a railroad bed from the east side of Jackson to Fairmont. So ours is a little bit more in-depth. And I guess the goal would be to create like a core team, have a main contact person, it could, you know, not to put Matt on the spot, but it could be Matt, it could be somebody else from the city as well. And the purpose of having that point of contact is so that way MINDOT and HDR, we'll just use HDR as an example, can stay in touch with you as the plan develops. Han could even be the point of contact as well. And then, of course, getting some letters of support. So, you know, say that you do want to focus mostly on your Active Living Plan as an update, it could be getting a letter of support from the city. Say that you want to focus on something more related to, towards zero death, maybe it could be then working with the city law enforcement, county law enforcement, they could write a letter of support. Public health can always write a letter of support as well. And then what will, you know, as you're going through the application, it really isn't that long of one. You know, you're gonna, it's gonna ask for like current plans you have. In this case, it could be the Active Living Plan, it could be the Worthington School District Safe Roads to School Plan. So you kind of compile these plans that are uploaded, you know, it's all done online. So you just attach the files, explain what the plans are. And then kind of what your goals are, you know, moving forward over the next, I think if I remember right, it's about two years out. So thinking of projects that have happened recently and then maybe, you know, into the future as well. There is a, like an equity score, you just look that up online, it's all part of the grant. Basically, what that does is MINDOT created this tool. You just click on the link and it kind of has a map of Worthington and it looks at walkability, bikeability, what parts are kind of maybe tough to walk around or bike around. And then that will give you the score and you just type in that number online when you do the application. So it's a fairly simple process to do that. And then the funding timeline, so it will open, I'm guessing, in October or November. And then you folks would be considered a third class city, so that's, you know, communities over ten thousand to twenty thousand. And then there would be first class, second class, and then fourth class. So I don't know how they're gonna class or with the classification, how many communities they will support for this coming grant cycle. I think with the case of Jackson, it was two others, communities. It may have been Marshall and Jackson when they did it, but don't quote me on that for us. So that, you know, we do have a chance for Worthington. I personally feel it would be nice, just with some of the projects that you folks have going on, having an Active Living Plan that could be updated. So I guess the timeframe then, so say that you're awarded, it would be, I would say, five to eight months of working with HDR on your plan. They're very hands-on, they'll come down to Worthington, they'll do a tour of the town. They will have like an open house, so that way there's public input, feedback on the type of projects you're looking at doing. They'll do a community-wide survey. So all of this stuff that they'll help you with will be free. So the project would probably start next, probably summer, I would imagine, if you were awarded. Kind of just the time it takes for the grant to be, you know, completed and then reviewed by MINDOT as well. So I guess really, that's it in a nutshell. Does anyone have any questions? And there'll be more information to come, I just, you know, we're just here to let you know what's to come here in the next few months and into the autumn. Yeah?
Are there targeted things that you would like to look at? I guess I'm asking Matt that. Or, you know, within the bid that you think would fit in?
Yeah, I think primarily to, you know, if we get awarded funds and we can use it to update our Active Living Plan, that'd probably be what we go for. Just because you have a plan that's going on nine, almost ten years old now. We're trying to get stuff updated around here and not have these old plans that, you know, as the years go on, they just become kind of worthless over time, even though there's still a lot of really good things in it. So Luke and Han would be kind of a key part of that, and Luke especially on the grant side of that. Along too with some staff from SRDC who actually did our last Active Living Plan. So we've kind of been talking to them too and they support us with the grant process through that. So it's really just something that we're looking at doing and just, you know, almost sort of a heads up that we're gonna probably pursue this and look at maybe getting some funding to update this Active Living Plan and get it more current now, so.
Chris?
Are these, the grants that you're talking about, are these matching fund grants or are they like funding in whole or grants in whole for a project or?
This would be a hundred percent funded then. Yep, so there's no match, I guess that you could maybe consider the in-kind just being Matt's time, just helping with it, if that makes sense? Yeah?
Good, Amy?
So just for my information, Active Living Plan, if we had an updated Active Living Plan, then that would do what for us as a city?
No, that's a good question. So I, you know, Matt, I know you folks have applied for those, you know, Transportation Alternative Program Grants in the past for trails or sidewalks, maybe rapid flashing beacons, you know, for safety, you know, for safe pedestrian crossing, bicycling, stuff like that. This would then help kind of, when there's other grants, like those infrastructure grants available, now you have a plan explaining, this is the need and, you know, why we need this for Worthington. So it kind of gives you a better chance of then receiving the grant funding, if that makes sense.
To get a grant, so you can get, to do something, so you can get grants.
Exactly, yeah. And the other piece of it too is that most plans are really kind of high level. The Active Living Plan is actually really specific in what it has in it. So if you go back and you look at our two thousand and fifteen plan, you'll see that it identifies a number of really specific projects, a lot of which, you know, haven't been accomplished since then, but they're still really good things. After they adopted that one, I know they did like some South Shore Drive, they kind of did some testing with some paint and bike lanes, things like that afterwards, which never ended up resulting in anything there. But there was a lot of momentum after that plan was adopted, so it kind of gives you a good idea and they go out and they do surveys and things, so they kind of try to see what people are identifying as really needed things. It's, you know, it's not as broad as a comp plan, it's kind of something that falls under that, but it's really a lot more specific. If you look at it, it's got infrastructure projects, non-infrastructural projects, so it's talking about things like, you know, bikers, safety education programs, things like that that you could be doing. Which, following the last one when they had an Active Living Committee, that's kind of some of the stuff they're working on, those different programs that were identified in that. Obviously, a lot of the infrastructure goals just kind of come through the city normally anyways, so. Yeah, and I know, I can make point with, was it Jason was, he was here, was it Jason Brison, and then Jeremiah as well? So I know with staff turnover, sometimes projects, they just, I know, they get put on the back burner sometimes. But we're, you know, Han and I are definitely here to help support Matt, the city, with these projects if this plan, you know, if this funding were to be awarded. So, you know, we're always here, it's nice then to have, you know, Han, we finally have, after Claire left, it took a little while to get them onboarded, but now we have Han, so I think we can make some good progress on projects.
Steve?
When does the grant application open?
I'm thinking it'll be in November. Yeah, I'm guessing, and then it probably will be due in January, like very early January.
Do you help us monitor when it opens?
Oh, yeah, I can do that, yeah. Luke's very helpful with that. A lot of emails about, you know, grant opportunities opening up soon, things like that. In fact, I think there will be a MINDOT Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant opening probably around the same time, and that will also be a hundred percent funded. So if you have like a trail or a sidewalk, you know, if you want to do rapid flashing beacons, stuff like that, engineering-related projects, that'll be a hundred percent funded. And you guys, you know, you folks are large enough where you wouldn't necessarily need to go through the county, like in Jackson, I always have to go through the county to get their blessing before moving forward on a project. So that's another item that I can keep in touch with Matt about. So I guess I always tell folks, especially in this part of the state where maybe trails and sidewalks are not, you know, as favorable in some communities, that, you know, if we don't apply, Northern Minnesota will apply, they're Greater Minnesota and they love their trails, it's their tourist attraction. So, yeah, I can keep you folks posted on that as well.
All right, anybody else have anything? So nothing needs to be done for us at this point?
No, just informational.
Thank you.
No, thanks for having me.
Thank you. Okay, onto Council Business Administration.
All right, first item is the third reading of the proposed ordinance to allow motorized golf cart operation on city streets with the issuance of a permit. Blue copy, the ordinance was provided in the May thirteenth Council Agenda. Council action is requested to give a third reading and subsequently adopt the proposed ordinance, and we receive no input or comments.
Move to approve the third reading.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes. I would like to, with this, do some sort of informational posting, something, you know, even if it's through a video or something, through cable three, if it's something under social medias, just to inform people, I had a number of people comment after this and they were like, oh, that I get it totally. And you're, you know, they need to be street legal and this and that. There's a lot of people that don't realize that you actually need a permit and you need to go out to the law enforcement center for side-by-sides. And now, if we do this final reading here, the golf cart, something to alert people to that, that you can do it, but you will still get a fine if you don't have a city permit, which is issued at the law enforcement center. So I think we need to.
I have an idea who might start the video.
All right, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Next case item, Fraternal Order of Eagles, Area thirty-two eighty-two, recently contacted the Worthington Fire Department and they have donated three thousand dollars to aid in purchasing fire equipment. Tasks resolution, accepting the donation of three thousand dollars as presented, council is requested to adopt resolution and accept the donation and fire chief, Asher Hirds here, if you want to offer a comment on that.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Just kind of came out of the blue, a female contacted me, the next day, I don't know the guy's name, me contacting me, we did paperwork with MINDOT and here we are. So it was a pretty nice bonus for us. Hard to say no.
Very nice, yeah.
Our purpose will be to buy a battery-operated portable fan for actually, for smoke. Be a nice addition to our equipment.
Move to adopt and accept with thanks. Yeah, motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
I had probably, I scrolled too quickly. Case item, lawful gambling premise, permit application for the Worthington Hockey Association. Worthington Hockey Association has submitted an application for a Minnesota lawful gambling premises permit application, which would allow them to sell pull tabs at the Forbidden Barrel Brewing Company at nine hundred third Avenue. Hockey Association currently has a permit for pull tabs at the Tap, Matt Grill, BFW, and is applying for the petitional site. Council action is requested on the application of the resolution shown in Exhibit five.
Second.
Motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Public safety.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So pursuant to the proposed golf cart ordinance, permit fees are being established by resolution. Staff proposes a one-year permit at twenty-five, two-year permit at thirty-five, and three-year permit at forty-five dollars. The proposed amounts are the same as the current ATV fees. Council action is requested to approve the attached resolution shown as Exhibit one.
Questions, comments?
We're being uniform with the allowance of those and I think that fits well, I would move to adopt.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Janine and Marv Spomer generously donated five thousand dollars to the Worthington Police Department to benefit public safety programs. Contribution will be utilized as part of a future public safety equipment purchase. Council action is requested to adopt a resolution shown in Exhibit two, accepting the five thousand dollar donation.
Move to approve the donation or accept the donation?
Okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you. Thank you.
And JBS generously donated ten thousand dollars to the Worthington Police Department as a contribution to cover expenses related to a future drone purchase and related training. Council action is requested to adopt a resolution shown on Exhibit three, accepting the ten thousand dollars. We do have a couple JBS representatives here in attendance. You guys have any questions or if they want to offer comments? A program like this typically isn't possible with some level of collaboration and we're very grateful for the partnership.
We have them come up and introduce themselves.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Diego Devara, I'm the industrial engineer there at JBS and it's always a pleasure to contribute to the community.
Hello, everyone, my name is Roberto Castellano, I'm also an industrial engineer at JBS and it's a pleasure to be here with you guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Move to adopt, the acceptance.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thank you. Thanks, thank you very much. Engineering.
Hello, everybody. Award the contract for Mill and Overlay. Bits for Mill and Overlay project on Lake Street, Sterling Avenue and Sherlane were opened on Wednesday, May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four at two fifteen PM. The bid result will be made public once the council award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder. The lowest bid submitted by Dunne Inc. is five hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven and twenty-five cents. Given that the, this bid is approximately twenty percent lower than the engineer's estimate, staff is considering adding Linda Lane to the project as a change order. Staff recommends that the council award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder.
Jim, will the Linda Lane project then get us to about what the estimate was?
Well, usually they honor the same unit price, but they might add extra moab mobilization on top of it since they have to move all the equipments from location to location. But other than that, all the unit price should be the same.
And will you do all of Linda Lane all the way to South Shore or just the?
Just the short block from South Shore to Woodcrest, I believe.
Yeah, okay, that's what I was wondering. Because there's a lot of work going on, is there right now that it'll need some help probably?
Yep.
Award of this contract, Linda Lane would be brought back to council as a change order.
I can, I should, yes, I will.
Can move to approve the award to the lowest responsible bidder, Dunne?
Second. Okay, we have a motion and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Award the contract for First Avenue Southwest Trail. Bid, bids for the First Avenue Southwest Trail were opened on Wednesday, May twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four at two PM. The bid result will be made public once the council award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder. The lowest bid submitted by McKeown Construction Inc. is hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Staff recommends that the council award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder.
Where, from where to where?
From Knollwood to driveway before Scott, it's the most easterly driveway on the Prairie Elementary School.
And what was the engineer's estimate?
It was over, it was around two hundred and thirty thousand.
And move to award the contract for First Avenue Southwest Trail.
Okay, we have a motion?
Second.
And a second, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Thanks, good. Okay. Council Committee reports, just have my head book. Have to say a few words to the ALPS State Convention coming up on June twenty-first, in the morning anyways, opening statements or whatever. Then also planning on going to the Coalition for Greater Minnesota Conference in Rochester for twenty-six through the twenty-eighth. That's all I have. I don't have any. Amy?
No, we're yours.
Chris?
I've just had a comprehensive plan meeting this last week, basically just really an update as in general, as far as what that might look like. We'll see another form or draft that coming up before the council in short time, so.
Until by MCA, they're just kicking out their fundraising for business and individuals, so.
Thank you, Ken.
I too was at the comprehensive plan meeting, as Chris described, it's a lot of moving parts to put all that together. It's a, you know, a plan of twenty, you know, plus years, so there's a lot of things going into it and it's just laying out, you know, goals, objectives, verbiage, to make it clear for city staff now and the future as to goals, objectives, a planned use, recreational trails, all that stuff. But they're very good meetings and I'm very impressed with the staff that has been working with us on putting the comprehensive plan together and specifically with Matt. It's a pretty neat process and I was part of the last one. So to see it again, this one's been very interactive for people and opportunities and groups to have input in, so that's very good. And then I think the only other meeting I've had since I've been here is transportation. Probably one of the biggest things is we made a suggestion to take a look at just converting the city route. take a look at just converting the city route into, um, dial-a-ride. It's just, there's no way possible that it makes any sense to continue, uh, with the very, very minute, um, usage of that, uh, to convert to the dial-a-ride, which has, I think, one of the committee members, uh, did the math work on it. It was forty-five times more use, uh, that it's, it, we just finally said that it doesn't make sense. So did they have more of a route now then where the dial-a-ride is going to be more specific with addressing?
Dial-a-ride will take you anywhere you want to go. But the other buses that are now, did they just have a route?
Yes, it was a route.
And people want to be more specific. They want to go where they want to go, when they want to go there. And you get that with dial-a-ride opposed to set time to the set place, uh, and it follows a route, so.
And cost is still memo? It's a?
It was like a dollar, a dollar fifty more, maybe is, is all for a ride. Yeah, any statement with that at all or as far as transportation? No, uh, we've made the, we've given the stats, uh, or requested that the stats be given to, uh, those with any grants, things that were involved in that. And just said, take a look, it, it, there's no chance it even comes close to covering or what the expenses are of that. None. That's it. Steve?
Just a reminder, the golf cart ordinance doesn't officially take effect until it's been published in the newspaper, which next Wednesday, the nineteenth, the ordinance will be. Uh, we received the funds from Minnesota West today. Near the two hundred thousand dollar, uh, contribution to our future improvements. And we're now in that time of year where we're starting to look at next year's budget. So we're going to be, uh, moving forward with our compensation review, uh, all of our union agreements, uh, and at the end of this year. So we'll be starting to put together our forecast for twenty twenty-five moving forward and also with our C I P, be starting to work on next year's and, and the following years. But, uh, so, that's all I have to report.
Yeah?
Move to a turn.
Second and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.